Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Southern Shores Town Council meeting for January the 7th, 2025. If you will please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Council, there is an agenda in front of us. Are there any amendments that you would like to propose for our agenda tonight?
Nope.
Yeah, I'd like for us to go into closed session at the end of this open session.
Okay. Paul has made a motion for a closed session to be added to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have added a closed session to our agenda tonight. Now, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as just amended?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. All opposed, say no. We have an agenda. Thank you. All right. So in our consent agenda, council on pages one to eight, there is a resolution, there are a couple of budget amendments, and there is the approval of the meeting minutes that were emailed earlier. And I just wanted to note that the resolution is for our very own Deputy Chief Slagel's He is no longer with us, and we miss him already. So that's what that resolution is about. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. Moving down our agenda, we have our staff reports we are going to hear from Wes Haskin, our deputy town manager and our planning director. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening and Happy New Year, Mayor and members of council. For this monthly report, for I'll start with December permits, there were a total of 39 permits issued. They consisted of non-zoning permits, 14 building permits, 13 trade permits, two lot disturbance stormwater management permits, and one lot disturbance demolition permit. With respect to code enforcement in December, there were zero warning citations mailed. And with respect to Planning Board, this month in January, they'll be meeting on January 22nd at 5:00 here in the Pitt Center. And the purpose is for the board to discuss and possibly consider zoning text amendment applications submitted by the town to amend town code section 36-132A, non-conforming lots of record. Any questions?
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just note that that's a Wednesday, not a Monday because of the Martin Luther King holiday.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Chief Cole.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The December 2024 monthly report for the police department, as you can see, we had 1,441 calls for service. Compared to last year, we're up 328. Incidents, which were the crimes that were actually reported, we had 22 of those. And under criminal arrest, we had six criminal arrests, which included two DWI's, a communicating threat, one drugs, one for drug equipment, and we had three warrant services. Traffic stops, officer conducted 34 traffic stops in December, and they issued 12 written citations and another 19 warning citations. Ordinances, there were six for a total for parking in a no parking area, and we had five actual reported motor vehicle accidents for the month of December. Questions? Okay. Our newest officer who's out there, we will do an official swearing in here with his family and that next month hopefully, but we're happy to have him on board. So we lost a good one, but we got a good one too.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. We look forward to it. Thank you very much. Fire chief, Chief Limbacher. Good evening, sir.
Evening, Mayor, council. For the month of December, brief report, 29 EMS calls, one each of hazardous material or hazardous condition, electrical wiring, smoke detector service, door saver program, which is also a service we offer, one public service, seven cover, standby, or move up, eight canceling route, and two fire alarms. Very brief this month, typical of December. Last year was 47, so.
It's nice to have it a little quieter over the holidays, I would think.
Absolutely. 100%. Yep.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Chief Limbacher?
Well, I don't know if we were a public assist or a medical emergency or what we were, but I greatly appreciated the fire department coming over and helping my husband get back into our house after his hip surgery. So thank you so much.
You are welcome.
It's a great public service.
Anytime. Yep. How we break that up is if it's a 311, that is typical, like a patient assist where it's a stairchild type event like that. And then the medical calls are typical, like a cardiac condition or an overdose or something like that. That's the 321. I try and break them apart, so if anyone asks exactly what category, what you're doing, I can break them apart and tell people.
What was great, even though he insisted he didn't need it.
I don't think he liked being in that chair very much, but I think it was probably the best way to go.
Really appreciate all that you do for our community, Chief Limbacher. It's really blows me away, the services that you guys provide.
Appreciate your support.
Absolutely. If I ever have hip surgery, I'm calling, I'm calling the chief.
Now we know what number to use, too.
Yeah.
311.
Excellent. Good evening, Cliff, town manager. We have lots of stuff to talk about. Thank you so much.
Happy New Year to everyone. I'll start off with the quarterly report, quarter two for, yeah, quarter two for fiscal year 2025, of course, October, November, and December. I know how to draw this. Why is it not advanced? All right. Well, so just to start with some highlights in quarter two, we obviously started the Trinity Trail Bridge project. I'll get into that a little bit more later. The last news I got for December 31st was that the document scanning project had completed. It was done. Everything's in laser fishing, ready to go. We had some more beach grass planting that went on through the quarter. Volunteers planted 41 boxes, which amounts to 61,500 sprigs. Next, of course, we continue to work on the cemetery. The entry corridor enhancement committee met twice. I think we may have found a potential use for 13 skyline, which I'll talk more about. And we applied jointly with the town of Duck for a FEMA brick grant, which is the building resiliency in communities grant to address stormwater issue at our shared town boundary. And I'll talk more also about the fire study that we did, the long-range planning study for what a transition from volunteer to paid might look like. We heard from the tourist bureau that we were awarded $91,533.67 to continue our efforts to replace damaged or worn out multi-use path. Asphalt will be replaced with concrete. This will be probably start next quarter from Fifth Avenue to Hillcrest. As the chief said, we got one and we lost one. So that future police officer was hired, but we lost one too, unfortunately. Okay, so I'll jump right into the revenues for the month. It shows the running total, of course, October, November, December, what we're talking about. You can see that this all told, we're $481,842 of expenses over revenues at this point, which is typical historically for us. You can see in that the graph at the bottom, it just kind of illustrates the red being the expenses that eventually things start to level up and catch up as we start to collect both ad valorem and occupancy sales and land transfer taxes. We received four months of sales and land transfer tax, but these numbers are absent land transfer for the fourth quarter. And this breaks out those revenues. We've collected almost 60%. We're under from what we had collected. We had collected quite a bit compared to the year before, but we got $39, $3.9 million left still to collect. All right. And this shows the difference there to the far right is, that's the difference of FY25 over '24. October, we, October, November, we collected more than we did the year before, but December we didn't. But again, based on, you'll see on the next graph, the, that it all, again, it just sort of starts to level out. The purple indicates less, you can see September and December, the revenue for FY25 was less than it was last year, but things are pretty much running right in line. This, again, with occupancy, sales, and land transfer, my three favorite revenues, especially occupancy, but the amount we're over or under, I guess, it's to be expected at this time of year. You can see down at the bottom one, again, that shows how much we had collected in this time, by this time in '22, '23, and '24. And it's all, as we had predicted, it's all kind of a steady decline from the massive increases we had seen in years past, which I think the next slide will illustrate. The green will show that we're less than this year, than less than occupancy, sales, and land transfer, and less, less collected as a total compared to the last two years through this, to the year-to-date. But we have accounted for that. This one shows each department, general fund department and their expenditures. I'll jump right down to the bottom. All told, we've spent 44.54% of the expenditures. So, you know, everything again here looks pretty much right in line. Ocean Rescue, of course, being higher because of July and August, and, but everything else again, looks right, steady. This breaks down the expenditures by month. Again, November, we, November was, let's see, I'm sorry, October, November, where it's two months in the quarter that we spent more, but year-to-date, we've spent $101,000 more this time in the fiscal year than we did last year. So that's pretty even. And again, it shows that these graphs are what they're worth. They just kind of illustrate that, how we're doing compared to years past. But with our budget, $1 million, that October jump there in expenditures was attributed to street, a street project. And so it can really throw things off, not paint quite the picture it would if we were a little more steady. But it doesn't take, you know, much, depending on where, when the revenue comes in and the money goes out. The expenditures this time versus last time, and again, it's showing right, almost flat this time last year over the year before. Nothing really jumps out as concerning. And then summary, this is not a great graph, but you'll see the summary, 59.78% of our revenues we've received were $5.8 million, and we're $267,000 behind this time last year. We've spent 44.5, 44.54% of the budget, 100,000 less than we had spent this time last year. So expenditures right now exceed revenues by 481,000. And then the year before, expenditures exceeded revenues by 315,000. And the last one, I kind of put the sales, occupancy, and land transfer, that'll kind of tell you how far behind we are for '23 and '22. And you can see it's kind of that illustration. It looks a little more steep. But again, I think we've, we knew that was coming, and we budgeted pretty conservatively. Then just jumping ahead, we'll continue on the Trinity Trail project. I hope to have some good news with the town hall renovations. The camera, the security camera replacement actually started yesterday, so that should be completed relatively quickly. And Lynn's going to keep at it. She's picked up five boxes before he walked over here tonight, actually. Also, the, you can go to the next. We should have the result, I think, by February, we'll have the results of the study, of the feasibility study for the fire department I talked about. We, I'll talk about the switch maybe between space here in the Pitt Center and 13 skyline. And we're still working on the, getting the credit card payments online. We'll put, in the third quarter, we'll put out another street paving project, we'll hire another police officer. We'll apply for American Cyber Defense Agency grant. And what that does, you remember, we had the National Guard, they came and they did an analysis of our cybersecurity, and we can apply for funding to implement that plan and to write new plans, like continuity of service, what do we do if things go down? How do we keep running? Where's all the backup and that sort of thing? So we'll, we'll make that application, and of course, we'll continue. The improvements are being done now on the spindrift, chick off, and Trinity Trail sidewalks, and that'll continue through the quarter. And I think that's it. Any questions on that? All right. Yes, sir.
What were the major findings of the National Guard study?
A lot of that's, most of it's way over my head, but there's, there's connections or some switches that we may need to beef up. There's, you know, that sort of thing, the background stuff. But I don't, there were not any big up-ohs or any big scary things, but I'm waiting for that report to come out, and I can, I'd rather read it to you than try and figure out what I'm trying to explain. But we have that, and we'll share that when we get it. Okay, the, I wanted to update you on that fire department unification study. Of course, we hired the North Carolina, we hired consultants from the North Carolina Fire Chief Consulting Organization that, and they report that they positively moved forward with the merger and feasibility analysis. As of January 4th, they had individually interviewed 15 members of the Southern Shores Fire Department onsite, individually entered four of the five, and Skid, have the interview, five of the five council members have been interviewed as of now, interviewed some of the other key external stakeholders to gain a stronger grasp of pertinent challenges. They've accessed the fire department's incident record systems in order to conduct an analysis of response data. They reviewed state reporting data for the fire department, received a financial data package from the fire department, and is currently reviewing it. And they've received quite a lot of information from Chief Limbacher, and I greatly appreciate how much time and energy and effort this has taken from him. In the coming days, they'll continue to work with the information they received. They'll survey, and I think that survey went out today, through the full membership of the department, and subsequently begin constructing observations and recommendations, all consultant talk that we'll get back in February. And I also just wanted to add to this, that the last, at least the last couple of years, Chief Limbacher has sent a letter to the, to our property owners explaining that the fire department, the cost of, that's saved by the town by having a volunteer fire department is extremely significant. And the town, the town appropriates about $1.2 million from the general fund to the fire department each year. 314,000 of that is to pay for the debt service on the fire department. Included in what's left is funding for three full-time positions and two part-time positions. So about 7.15 cents of our taxes are appropriated through the fire department. And right now, before revow, which, you know, that, the county's going through the tax reassessment, and that'll kick in, our tax rate's going to change tremendously. But right now, we figure that if we were to go out and hire two firefighters, it would be equivalent of 1.15 cent tax increase. So I say that to share the significance, also share that to say that there could be an impact. The idea is to keep the volunteers as long as we possibly can, but at some point, as the chief's been telling us, there's, and we all know, there's going to be an impact to our budget. Questions on that?
Wait for the report?
Yep. Good. Jumping to Trinity Trail, that project started, the bridge started on December the 9th. Of course, we all know there was some excitement from the get-go. Thankfully, no one was hurt when the crane got a little too close to the, to the culvert itself. Right now, they're driving in sheet piles. They've had some sheet piles put in on the north and south side. They've had some delays with mechanical issues. Still trying to get that craned where it needs to be. They discovered, they discovered a significant chunk of concrete that was buried, either part of an old project that was just buried, or it was put there for reinforcement, but it was nothing that anybody knew was there, so they're, they're having to work around that. But they are still online to meet the February 15th moratorium date. And we're going to start, we'll have a progress meeting with all the players on Thursday, and we'll probably start having those once every two weeks as, as we get more into this. So far, they've billed about $100,000 worth of work out of the 1.6 million. Most of that's mobilization.
Have you heard from any folks in the neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am. The, the sheet piles that are being driven is, vibrates quite a lot, especially for the properties that are right there adjacent. And so I've been in communication, going to make the connections, they'll, you know, I mean, Smith Row's been through this, probably with nearly every project. But property owner was smart to document items, and so we'll work through with them. Part of these progress meetings will allow me to have a kind of a better understanding of, and be able to communicate directly, hopefully before things like the, when the concrete piles get driven in, that's going to shake even more and give them a heads-up.
They were working on Sunday.
Yeah, that was an exception, one time. That's not going to be the norm.
Okay. I heard from some folks up there. Okay. Just, I thought so. So if they're not out by February 15th, we're in real.
It kind of comes to a stop.
We're Dutch, right?
I would be out there with a shovel myself.
We'll, we'll work hard, right?
So what's the status of the culvert pipe?
It'll get torn, it'll get torn apart.
So it's still in there, looking like it did after the crane hit it?
Yeah, it'll get ripped apart, put in dump trucks, and hauled away at this point. There's really no opportunity to salvage any of it, which will be less, I think, intrusive on Juniper.
Got it. Fingers crossed about the hauling it away. Yeah.
And then finally, I just wanted to, what I had mentioned before about the possibility of moving the SSCA and the CPOA from the space they occupy here, and moving them to 13 skyline. The reason for that is, we, of course, talked about the building renovations and the addition that we were trying to add on for the file storage and just astronomical cost of that. For convenience, it would be easier for us to house that, the files here, and there's additional space we could use here, that would be much more easily accessible for staff to have for the public. And so that would put the SSCA and CPOA office space, and we still need to work through what that rental agreement will look like. And hopefully, that'll be on your February agenda. But before we do that, you've got a conflict of interest resolution that we need you all to essentially waive and give Hornthal Riley, who represents the CPOA on some matters, the, give them the ability to represent us both in negotiating that, that trade.
So does this just need to be a, by consensus, we approve this resolution? Or do you need a motion and a vote? Or what do you need?
Motion and a vote.
Motion and a vote. Okay. At what point in the agenda do you want that? Now?
Now, sure.
Okay.
So have you decided, Cliff?
CPOA is going to do the same on Thursday.
Have you decided what the layout's going to look like? This is really, we're just going to have file storage here and nothing else?
Well, there, there may be some space, meeting space, there could be office space, but in the meantime, it'll mainly be storage, file storage.
Okay. Then, I know we sent contractor back to redo it, and it came back not favorable or didn't look good. So it just looks like we're looking for, I'm looking for a comprehensive plan for the whole campus.
I understand.
I mean, I think we've talked about that before.
Yeah.
Okay. And, I mean, and now we're doing 13 skyline, which, you know, we sort of thought we knew what we were going to do with it for temporary housing and all that, but just, I'm just looking for a plan, maybe.
I understand.
I don't think, I think some of us talked about it, but we never, we just need to, I think, I think we need to get on that, okay?
And at some point, I think it probably would be good to talk about what, what that looks like, how we go about putting that together, maybe at a retreat or at a future agenda meeting or council meeting.
Just a thought. I mean, I just think we need to do that.
You're right.
Okay.
I will say, you know, Chief Cole did an incredible job renovating 13 skyline, for which we are very, very grateful. And he also did, he offered it as much as he could to try to get, as an incentive, to get an officer hired. We spent more than a year trying to do that, and we were unsuccessful. So the thought process was, you know, we have a very underutilized piece of property over there. And so that's where we, the staff came up with the idea, and we thought it was actually quite good. I think it's really good to have our two homeowners associations in that historic Southern Shores flat top. It's just, you know, it, to me, it just makes all kinds of sense. So I hope, I hope we can work it all out. Okay? Sorry.
No.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
So, just that, conflict of interest between, why do we, why is, why do we have to sign a conflict of interest, and they are dumb, I don't know.
Well.
So.
They're both.
The same law firm is representing CPOA.
My partner, Johnny Hall, represents CPOA.
Oh, all right.
And this happens, these conflict waivers happen all the time, it's just, uh, a tacit understanding that if something goes on down the line and a conflict arises out of this agreement, everybody will have to get into the council.
I thought it was the town and the CPOA could have a conflict.
No. Not a legal problem.
Not a legal problem, right, okay. Just, all right, I didn't quite understand, that was, could have to do with representation.
Representation, yep. So we have this resolution in front of us, council, um, everybody, anyone else have any questions, concerns, comments about it?
You need a motion.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
I, I move that we approve the resolution waiving the conflict of interest.
And a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. We have an approved resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Philip? Town attorney, oh, yes, question.
Can I just ask Cliff one more question?
Sure.
Yeah. Just an observation, these Brightspeed people are sloppy as can be, and I know we can't do anything about it, but, you know, they're making Ripple look awful good.
Yeah.
I mean, with what they're doing to the yards and everything else, they just don't seem to have any, my opinion and watching them, is they don't have any, they don't take any, uh, pride or in how the work areas look even after they're done. I mean, you guys had to come out and straighten up the street sign that, uh, the city did after they tore it up and just put it back crooked, it just bothers me that they're just, uh, don't care that much.
In, in the short.
And I know they're contractors, and I know it's done by the cheapest guy on the, on the block, you know, and they've used enough paint, uh, this time to not hit anything, which is good, uh, where, where the lines are, but I mean, they are really sloppy.
I've had more complaints so far on Brightspeed than I did, I think, total from, from Ripple.
Yeah.
They're, they're responsive, but that's not preventing anything.
Yeah.
They're, they're responding to what needs to be fixed, but they're not preventing it from the get-go.
And they're leaving holes open at night.
Which.
Which is dangerous.
Yeah.
And people are walking, I mean, I know they're in the fifteen-foot right-of-way, but I've seen open holes.
Yeah.
They've dug, you're gonna come back the next day.
They have to fill those.
Somebody's gonna break an ankle, that's just my, my two cents, okay? They're just sloppy.
So the safety concerns, we can address right away. The sloppiness is, we can, we can tell them, but we, you know, there's nothing we can use to get them to do right, so to speak.
They'll, like I said, they'll clean up when we call them, but they don't, they don't keep them from making the mess, and that's what we're working on.
Okay.
Just two cents.
Thank you.
The holes do, well, that's safety, I agree.
Yeah, that's, that should be addressed immediately.
Yeah.
Okay, now, um, our town attorney, Philip Hornthal.
Happy New Year, nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Has anyone signed up to speak to us tonight? Is, if no one, if, has anyone changed their minds since they started listening to us? Would they like to speak without signing up? Come on, Mike, you showed up!
He was waiting in the car.
Happy New Year!
I waited in the car, I was having Chinese food.
All right, Mike Stone, Southern Shore Drive. On, you know, it's commercial property and everything, y'all passed a number of resolutions on commercial property and such, which had devalued in the past, this is just a reminder that due to bills passed by the state recently, that all of those, um, devaluations of property are, are now void, you know, however you deal with that. So, no, labor restricted covenants, you can't, you can have this, you can't have that, those things are now void, so, I know you are thinking about it.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else want to speak to us? Okay, um, we actually don't have any other business except new business, um, which is the North Carolina League of Municipalities Legislative Goals Voting Process. Cliff, do you want to just briefly tell, tell what happened? Tell us what happened with this?
There's a long process that the league goes through, um, starting with a committee that forms and all these ideas and initiatives and thoughts and policies and, uh, come from the full membership of five hundred and some towns, um, they'll work with the, uh, that committee, they'll whittle those goals down to about sixteen, and these are legislative goals that the league staff, um, will prioritize when they're going before and speaking to members of the General Assembly. Then these, that you were asked to vote, each town gets one vote, and so what we've done is ask you all to share your top ten, uh, and then I compiled those, and I've highlighted the ones, um, that kind of, uh, that were the most agreed on, uh, and then this will go before the executive committee, uh, which the mayor's a member of, um, and that'll get, uh, voted on, um, and the full membership will approve these goals moving forward. We've got these, we can, we can put these online, I, I can go through, um, if you like, I don't know if you want me to read all ten of them?
I don't, I don't think that's necessary, 'cause we've, we've all gone through them and, and given our two cents' worth. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or comments?
I just have a, a comment, this may get a little academic, but there's a, there's a statistical notion called a coefficient of concordance, and what that means is how much agreement, let's say, there is on the town council in terms of the ranking, and it would be nice if the, uh, if the, uh, these legislative goals, uh, you know, were all, if, if all five, five hundred towns and, and cities and everything else, to see how much agreement there are, let's say, in the top three, and what percentage of that. So there is a statistical measure that one can use to do that. You know, for five of us, you know, here and, and other staff, that may not be the, the best thing, but for a larger number, it makes a huge difference to say there is, let's say, you know, fifty, sixty percent agreement on these three, you know, legislative initiatives.
Yeah, that should be pretty, I think they should easily be able to do that.
Yeah. If you make a recommendation up the food chain, you know, and that's, it's called coefficient of concordance.
Yep.
Well, my only question was, what happens after this?
So this, this, our vote will go, um, they'll, if I understand right, the mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, they'll, they'll tally all these up and they'll put, um, the ten before the executive committee, uh, to approve.
Yeah, and then it'll go to full, actually a full membership vote, um, and so, and basically it, it.
Same process.
It sets the priorities for the, uh, the staff that is with the league, whose job it is to promote the league, the, the cities and towns' priorities to the General Assembly. So we have a team of about, the league has a team of about six, I think, um, for lack of a better word, lobbyists, so they are, they work in the General Assembly every day that they're in session, and they try to, you know, represent cities and towns' priorities to the General Assembly, and honestly, lately, they seem to be, you know, more about trying to stop the worst things from happening, um, so that's what their job is. So this is us telling them what we would like to prioritize, and there, there are a lot of similarities, whether it's a small town or a big town, it's, there's a lot of similarities with these goals. So that's the, that's the gist. Okay, so, um, we need a motion to approve the top ten selected goals and to authorize the town manager as our voting delegate.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Thank you, Cliff, for doing this. Okay. One more time, anybody else want to talk? Len, Barb? Anne, Ruth? Nope, okay. Let's see, so we'll do council business before we go into closed session. Who wants to start? Mayor Proten, would you like to start on council business?
Yes, welcome everybody back for the new year, hope everybody's holidays was great, audience ended up on council, and I was out of town for a little bit, so I'm getting my feet back under me and appreciate being back here.
Cool. Paula?
Same, happy new year. The Abremore Regional Planning Organization will meet in the next two weeks, and, um, Wes and I both are members of that group, and I'm looking forward to an update, particularly on the Mid-Currituck Bridge, so I'll report back to, um, the town council about what I hear from that.
Bergit? Rob?
Current TV meet, uh, meeting in December was canceled because I think everybody was focused on the holidays, so there was not a quorum, and, uh, on the twenty-seventh of this month, uh, we're gonna meet down in Manio, and there's a few more proposals for videos, and then we'll also talk about, uh, possible film festival.
Nice, nice.
Okay, Mark?
Tour Board did have a meeting week before Christmas, we didn't cancel, we were busy, so, just kidding, but, uh, revenues are in line with what we thought they would be, uh, occupancy is still down almost five percent, and meals are flat, whi- which is good news. The twelve bars of Christmas, according to initial reports, that was a huge fundraiser, you know, for twelve different charities here in the, in the county, it was a huge success, that's the initial reports, we don't have any, any numbers on that, on that yet, uh, but, uh, we'll find out at the meeting this month, uh, in two weeks. So, um, the other thing, and the, the other thing is, is the tour, the tour board, the Visitors Bureau is releasing a series of nine films, and what they're doing is highlighting different characteristics and different, different points of interest with local people about why they live here in the Outer Banks, what's special about the Outer Banks, and there's actually a preview at the theater, some of you might got an invitation or not, you know, on the council, but to go see it, there's another one Wednesday night, you have to have a ticket to get in at, at the theater, Kill Devil Hills. Uh, I, I had privy to several of them, and, uh, they're well-done, uh, they're just fantastic, and it's, it's real, uh, folks talking about how amazing the area is and what it is to live here, I'm disappointed that they didn't pick Southern Shores sometimes for some of those, but it is, it is well-done, I mean, they've talked to watermen, they've talked to, you know, regular folks on the street, it's, it's a series, and it's meant to promote the tourism, but also it's, you know, uh, part of this was to help current residents, like all of us here, to understand why it is a special place and why people do come to visit, okay, 'cause there are grumbles about the tourists every year, that's nothing new, but it, it, it goes on, I mean, it's well, well-done, and you'll see these and they'll be released as well, so, uh, coming, uh, up through the springtime, so it's, uh, it's, uh, the money's being spent wisely, I think, for what, uh, we're gathering from the occupancy and all that, so it's pretty cool.
Just, just a question on that, uh, is there any mention of the blue zones within those videos?
Not yet, not yet, that's coming.
Okay, that's good, I mean, I just want to make sure that there's coordination between the two, because I think that's gonna be a sell-off for the Outer Banks.
Yeah, they're pushing on that hard, that, that, that is coming, and they, and they plan to, to keep, uh, adding to the, to the, every, uh, these are nine-minute clips is what they are, and they keep, uh, adding to it with, uh, several points of interest along, they'll eventually get to Southern Shores, or maybe we want to keep it a secret, I don't know. One or the other, all right.
Thank you, Mark.
All righty.
Okay, so just a couple of things, um, our next council meeting is Tuesday, February the fourth, um, and what we'd like to do, I think, is have a discussion on, at that meeting about a, a retreat in March, so please come prepared with dates, time of day, and location, and topic ideas, and we'll, we'll gather all of that and, and try to have a retreat in March. The last time we were hosted by Chief Limbacher at our beautiful fire department, and, and it was great, so, um, we might do that again, but if you have other ideas, um, just bring them to the table, and, and we'll make a plan. Okay, um, Philip, we're probably gonna need some help from you about the actual motion to go, because we don't have this general statute in front of us.
Sure, I just need a motion from someone to go into closed session, so NCGS 143-318.11a3 to preserve the attorney clerk privilege.
Salute.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, we're in closed session. Thank you all.